I'd like to call this meeting to order. We give Stan and Steve a pledge. A pledge for justice to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose soul there is a justice for all. Ms. custody, do you have any visitors wishing to speak?
No, we don't.
Because we have more than that.
Do you hear? Okay, then I would like to call for any reports for board committees.
Yep, I attended the webinar for the Ms. Butler Business Meeting. Started at four o'clock, went until nine forty. So it was.
Wait.
Yeah.
Okay. Four?
Yes, nine forty P M. Did you think?
No, that's very long.
It was long, but it was interesting. It was actually, yeah, it was really long.
Sort of the one time that can disagree though.
So pretty much every resolution had, was discussed for about six minutes. Like they, for the most part, everything that Ms. Butler recommended to pass did. There was one that they were sort of on the fence about, and that was passed. But it was interesting, but it was long. And there were twenty-five recommended positions that passed. One additional position was adopted. They also elected officials. Their, their positions remain, positions for five years unless they get adopted sooner. So it was very similar issues that what you wrote about in the superintendent's survey, what you've been seeing at the legislative meetings. So very similar, but any, anything that, even though the district may agree with the position, if it seems like it's a mandate, they, there were districts that just automatically would vote against that. But everything passed eight percent or more for the most part. So it was interesting, but it was long until next year. Maybe it.
At least you could do it from the comfort of your own home.
Wonderful, yes. Yeah, because you could, you kind of knew when you needed to, to vote. They make it super, very easy. It was, it was.
How does that go? Is it like a yes or no?
A yes or no, they just, they discuss the position. And then they just, it pops up on the screen when they're ready to vote. And then, you know, within fifteen seconds, they announce what the results are. And then they move to the next position. And it's a six-minute discussion time. And then by the time the, they had it last year, by the time any resolutions, there are late resolutions, there is the vote, do we want to hear them? And by nine forty, the vote was no. We don't want to hear any late resolutions. And then leaving them, was it right?
So. Vote was no.
It was overwhelmingly no.
Thanks so much for doing that. Any other board reports?
The tax researcher committee that. And we discussed. An open issue. Did we say the, the properties?
I don't think so. Well, the future's pending.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyways, so we, we voted to.
Call her?
Call her, yeah. Give an offer, and if they don't accept it, we're going to go get appraisals. Make it nice and simple, darling.
Just one? There was just one that was?
There was the only one.
One property?
Yeah.
That wasn't exciting, as exciting as my meeting.
Well. Great.
Just saying.
What?
Just saying. Any other board reports, committee reports? Okay. And we are ready for the superintendent's report.
Okay, great. We have two things. First, we'll start with Dr. Shanahan and the second half of her recent curriculum update, focusing on our secondary goal, these middle school and high school. Welcome.
Thank you. My round change. So thanks, last time we met, I did the elementary curriculum update, and tonight I'm going to do the secondary update. There is obviously curriculum work going on in every discipline that we have in every area. I'm highlighting five tonight, but there is a lot more going on than this. And next to each of the five are the topics that they are focusing on, that I'll go over in brief with you. But I do, I will share some proficiency scores in the slides. If you've got, take, take, got the G S to take a look at them, sorry, two-minute words. And just so you know, I, we can't go longitudinally with that data because of the interruption in instruction and assessment given COVID. So like in two thousand nineteen and twenty, there were no assessments. In two thousand twenty, twenty-one, although districts gave the assessments, they, across the state, about four out of ten was the ratio of people who took that assessment. And the English language learning, learner population and the economically disadvantaged were underrepresented. So when we received those scores as a district, we were told not to use those to do any comparisons because we weren't, it was not representative of the population of New York State. And we have a similar, like if you look in our district and the proportion of people that took it, it was the same. So we mirrored the state results as well. So then in twenty-one, twenty-two, we gave the assessments, but there were a lot of exceptions to what happened to them because there was still a lot going on at that time. So what we have been doing when we look longitudinally at all is we're looking only at twenty-two, twenty-three, and then what we have tonight, which I'll share with you, which is twenty-three, twenty-four. Every once in a while, if we want to take a snapshot back to pre-pandemic, we will look at eighteen, nineteen to do those types of comparisons. So you'll see it'll be, there won't be a longitudinal aspect, but we did look across two years. So we have curriculum leaders that I meet with every year. And let's starting off with English. I ask them, and we work on like, what are your strengths within your department? What are your areas of development? And what do you want to work on? Because we need not only to look at the data, but also to look at the more qualitative data that they, from classrooms, et cetera. So when I spoke with the curriculum leader for the English group, one of the things that they wanted to work on was increasing active participation. So imagine coming out of the masking, and I know it feels like it was forever ago, but for our students and their interaction patterns in school, there were some lasting effects that occurred. So one of the things that, concepts that they wanted to work on was increasing active participation, meaning getting kids to participate more around whatever the learning is in class at the time. So there's one mode of teaching you can use in a classroom, which you're probably going to be really familiar with when I say it. I can use what Courtney Kasdan coins as initiate, respond, and evaluate. So I could stand up in class, I use English as an example, and I can ask, how did the main character change across the first five chapters? And then one of you would answer, that's response, and then evaluate. I would give you, yes, good, or, well, like who can add on to that now? But basically what's happening when you use an I R E talk pattern is you have one student engaged with the teacher. So we wanted to move away from that a little bit. So another way to do that might be, I pose the question to the entire class. I might say, how did the main character change across the first five chapters? Everybody goes into their text, they mark that, and then they come together in partners and talk about that and develop what they think are the changes. And then we go into a whole group conversation. At that point, I have all minds on the learning target that we're trying to get to. So they were trying to, because students were not engaging actively in conversation as much as they were pre-pandemic, they were trying to find ways to get students to increase their active participation. Another, what this evolved into now, this is over time, is the image on the bottom is of a book around using inquiry in learning. So you're generating questions from students. So you're harvesting student voice within the process of learning in order to gain interest and to gain the attention that needs. So that's also something that they have been working on. So the goal was initially to get students more actively engaged in classes and finding different participatory strategies to do that. So that's been evolving over the past couple of years. And I'd like to just show you a video. Hopefully, I will open and play it loud. As English teachers, the core of our work is creativity. It is natural for us to find ways to invite creativity in our classroom. Our world is ever-evolving, but since COVID, it seems that the nature of our work needs to evolve with it. We saw a disconnection between our students and our content, and we have been working diligently to address engagement concerns in our kids. We needed to get creative. And over the past few years, we've worked at Buffalo State University to develop inquiry-based curriculum to help us build better connections with our students, but also invite their own creative energy into the classroom. Here's what a few of them had to say.
In your class, I feel like I got to, we don't want better writers because the way that you investigated a lot of questions about who we are and why we are, like the way we are, and on this like world, this planet. I got to think on a deeper level on understanding of why things are the way they are.
I feel like I learned not only a lot about English, but I learned more on myself because of the writing experiences. And if you were able to like write about how I really felt instead of making up something to make it to true.
Like she would ask this question during the class, and then she, and then I would go home and think about it for like the next week. Because it just, it, it was about more deeper topics. Like the one, one of our units was, what does it mean to be a human? And it just, sometimes it just gets you thinking about like, what does it actually mean to be a person?
Some other classes, they were more restrictive. And sometimes teachers, they would have their own opinions also, I guess. Like, and it was like, you have to think this way, and you know that's not right. But if this was last class, it was, okay, sure, you can think that way, but tell me why, you know? Give me your reasons.
I feel like in the past, it's been a lot of like grammar and focus on what's right and what's wrong.
This experience is different because it isn't like a strict, strict outline of what you need to write. You kind of go in your own directions, and you don't need to be like, that's just my thoughts.
I would say the class definitely like encouraging, I think thoughtful. I would say thoughtful, actually.
So creative, like, it's just.
I think creativity or imagination is a great description.
I'd say available because it's not like, we're learning things that'll stick with us, and we're not only learning things that we'll probably forget in like a year or two.
So just to summarize a little bit, sometimes what they were doing with using a broad.
Well, it's okay, just press the X.
That's the end of your presentation?
Done.
Well, what, they were, in their inquiry units, they were using a broader theme. And so like, in being a human, you could read, you could read excerpts, read texts from multiple perspectives, feel and see how other people experience being humanness in the world, et cetera, and not take it into detail. But the goal was to add the voice in. They're still teaching students how to write. They're still, although it doesn't feel that way, sometimes when you're more invested and you're getting the feedback on your writing that you're invested in, it feels like there's a little bit more choice there. So there's definitely guidance on writing. I don't want you to leave with that impression, but choice increases engagement, which can increase participation. But we still obviously are teaching them to be strong writers as well. And then I always share these with you, just to give you an example of where we are. So in twenty-three, twenty-four, the grade six was at fifty-four, fifty-four percent proficiency proficiency scoring either a three or a four. This was a little bit lower than what we typically have. But I want you to go back in time and remember, these were our students that were in first grade, moving through the system. We have found, when we look at the servicing of A I S, when I work with the middle school, and I work with the elementary schools on that multi-tiered systems of support, we have found that the kids that were in K one or two, when they had all that screen, learning through a screen or every other day, there's been a little bit of a lag there. But we have also then put our resources around that. So we have extra interventionist, the proportion of time that we spend with students in those grade levels is higher. So when we look at a caseload, you can only take a certain number of students. We make sure that the students that are going into fifth, now sixth, and then seventh, that group of students gets a little bit extra support. And we've been monitoring that, and we have added extra positions over the years, past few years, in order to address that. So we recognize it and, you know, working towards getting that a little bit higher. The other scores are where they typically would be for E L A. Another, when I show you these, what happens when the teachers look at these is they see this, but then they drill down. So they look question by question. They look at type of question. Was it multiple choice? Was it short response? Was it essay? They look at the standards that it's hitting. And then they actually do an analysis of which, if there is, we compare our scores to B O Cs and to the state. And if we are below in any of those, because we're typically above B O Cs, the region, and we're higher in the state as well, what we look for is which particular standard. So although our scores will be fine, which particular standards, might there be a pattern in where we are not achieving what we want to achieve? So if there's a negative gap to, negative score to B O Cs. And the teachers dig into that. And then they walk back and revise curriculum based on what they saw. So that, that has already happened with each one of these that I'll share tonight. They dig very, they dig on a brand new level. And then English was ninety-three percent, and that was a one percentage difference there. So slight. So for social studies, they are working with their curriculum leader. We are working in three different areas. One is professional development that they wanted this summer, specifically focusing on controversial topics and having conversations around those controversial topics when you have a diverse population of students. And how do you handle those conversations to honor everybody in the room, show multiple perspectives, and learn from one another? So they did, they did some work on professional development on that this summer, as well as they did a field trip this summer. They went to the Underground Railroad Heritage Site where they have stories. They carry stories around people who were seeking freedom through the Underground Railroad. And they're incorporating some of that into their U S classes to talk about injustices and slavery and oppression. So there is a direct, both of these topics are topics they felt they needed immediately. Like they felt, these are things, given the landscape right now, we need to know how to address it, to talk in these spaces in ways where we honor multiple perspectives. And they also wanted to increase some curriculum work around the, just some local history around that as well. So then curriculum review, I'll talk about that. And then the C E L A civic readiness and the slides that are upcoming. So you see this image, like I know this by heart. I keep reading it out because it grounds the work that we do. So we have those standards. So the, this summer, the social studies teachers got together, and they looked at the U S history scores, and they looked at the global scores. They looked at them by standard, they looked at them by question type, and they determined where they thought some of their areas of growth were. They had some content-specific areas where they felt they needed work, and I identified those numbers on there. You're welcome to look them up if you want. They've identified them, and they have, this summer, they went into their units, and they revised instruction to better meet those needs of those specific topical areas. So overall, we scored very well, but you're looking for the one or two areas where we could just do a little bit better. And that, those specific content areas were those. And then for instruction and curriculum, which are these pieces here, when they looked at the assessment and they looked beyond the content, they looked at the specific question types. They felt that students that were scoring in the middle area on the exam, they felt that those students could have scored better in their writing. It was because of the writing. If they, they could have scored, scored better if they had done more inclusion of their document analysis and evidence within the writing. So their writing was a piece of it. And the students that were scoring a mid-range to higher, they felt that those essays could have, as writers, if they would have brought in more relevant experiences to go with the document analysis, that would have gone up higher. So they identified writing as an area they just want to continue to work on. And they, so that was their takeaway. So even though we're doing well, they're always asking, what more can we do? Because we can always grow. There's a lot to cover and a lot of different ways to show what you know if you're a student. So because of that, they, they're working with their writing on November fifth again, end of summer, in their units. And they're also revising the pacing, because when you teach somebody how to write, it takes a little bit longer, it takes iterations, it takes feedback. It takes, you know, constant involvement in the process. It's time-consuming, but it's worth it. Because everybody can be a good writer, you just have to write, you need to get feedback, and it needs to be recursive over and over and over. I always say, I wasn't a great writer, I was a great advisor. So, and then they're looking at these specific areas in time where there were some more questions missed, especially focused on women who were influential during those time periods, which was fascinating to me. So they revised and looked at their curriculum to incorporate that a little bit more than what they had done before. So those are their, their takeaways and their work. And this work spans across the year. So it kind of gets launched with this analysis, and then it just keeps going again throughout the year. And we build and revise curriculum and instruction based on that. So the social studies, social studies regions proficiency were ninety-three and ninety-four percent, similar to what they have been. And they're finding ways through, they think the writing is the vehicle right now they have to use to increase those scores. So the third prong that we've been working on with them is the C E L A civic readiness. And some of you may have, I know Dominic has a child who participated in it when it was in a pilot year. So we started it as a pilot a couple of years ago, and we are building it. So let's talk about the building. The C E L A civic readiness focuses on three areas with students. Their civic knowledge, their readiness, and their participation. And what it does is we, is we, to this point, have created an elective for this C E L A civic readiness. But these are for students that want to take it as a class and dedicate time across the, you know, across the year on this course. What I spoke with them about is there, anybody can be civically engaged. So what are you doing with the people that don't want to enter class? How do we get them civically engaged? So that was kind of my Pepsi challenge to them. Like, what are you going to do to get more students involved in their community? Because we can all identify something going on in our community that might need to be changed, no matter how big or small it is. So what can you do to start investigating that and working on that? So there, the social studies department is working on increased opportunities for students who don't want to take, take the civic participation as a course, but they participate civically, doing service throughout the school year. And then that leads to, how do you track all that? Because the C E L A civic readiness is tracked over time. Right now, we do it nine through twelfth grade, but soon we're adding, layering in eighth and across teachers. So imagine a messy Google sheet. Got to get out of that. So we started working with Local Civics is a technology platform that can track over time and across teachers so that students can see where they're at, and teachers can see where students are at and input information on there. So Anne Ward and Adam Wispinski have graciously been piloting this. We have, are in the planning and design phase, which means we have to lay out how students gain these points, which there are rules. They have them written already, but we have to put them out in a technology platform. And then, so kids will, students will earn badges based on which of these, there's badges for civic knowledge, so many points for that, points for readiness, and point for action. And they have to develop, or gather these points over nine through twelve, which will eventually, it's going to be eight through twelve. So how do you track that? So you can see where they are, and they can see where they are. What do they need? What are they shorting? What points do they have? So we're working with Local Civics to launch this right now. And here's the good news. They've decided that their platform can do more than civics. So we're going to also do our individual arts pathway, and our C E L A by literacy can all be tracked through the same system. But what we decided to do is try to build the C E L A civic readiness first. Get this as our test pilot, watch it, see how it goes, and then determine when we layer the next to it. But the, down the road for graduation, graduation, some of these endorsements are going to be, take a, a little bit different of a role potentially. So we want to be in a place where we can track that information. So we're working with Local Civics right now, just with the C E L A civic readiness. And on March seventh, they're coming in to meet with the individual arts pathway and the C E L A by literacy. In the meantime, those two groups are working on documenting what it would take for a student to earn these, which they have in paper, but how do we now transform it into the platform? So, sorry, I went backwards, I'm going backwards and forwards. Okay. Shifting, so that, those are the three prongs that I shared with you. We did the professional development, really looking at our assessment, and then looking at how to keep track of the C E L A in a way that students can be in control of their own learning as well. So math, math has a slow rollout that we've been going through on the next generation math standards for instruction and assessment. Tied to that are common formative midterm assessments and common formative assessments first and third semester. So I'll share this with you, you have a version in front of you. The twenty-three, twenty-four scores, I'm going to show you. When you see the Algebra I, that course, that's a brand-new test for them based on the new standards that they took in junior. So that was new for them. Before they took this, they created a midterm that would mirror this to see how students were doing, okay? So now they've, they've gone through their assessment, they've analyzed the results, same as I shared before, they've looked at the types of questions, the, and how students did, what standards they were strong on, which standards were areas of development, and they refined instruction based on that. But now, that group has now built a Quarter One Common Formative Assessment. They have a midterm that they revised to see how, they analyzed it to see how good it was. And then a three. So before they get to that assessment, we're going to know in Quarter One, Quarter Two, Quarter Three, any way we have to monitor and adjust what students are and are not understanding so that we can change our instruction in order to meet their needs. But moving forward, this year, this is geometry. So this June, geometry has their first assessment that aligns with the New York State, the next generation math standards. And then a year after that will be Algebra Two. So right now, they're mimicking what Algebra just did. They have their midterm, they're ready to give. They'll be doing their one and three quarters next summer. And then these folks already have their midterm ready to go, and then they'll do their one and three. So it just gives us data and information. Why? You have different people teaching the course. You have students that you need to pace it slightly differently for. How are we doing? Are we, are students getting and meeting the standards the way they need to? Because that diagram I showed you, everything is, are they meeting those standards? So that's where we're trying to get some cohesion across different sections as well. So our middle school math proficiency levels are about in the range they always are. Notice in eighth grade, seventy-nine percent in a hundred and twenty-six students are, remember, in eighth grade is where we add in Algebra. So there's another forty-one students there that scored, you know, all proficient, you know, three, fours, or fives. And then with the high school regions proficiency, Algebra One, I think they were one percentage? Hold on, there it is. They went up a percentage. And Algebra Two and Geometry also scored, Algebra Two and Geometry scored much higher in twenty-three, twenty-four than twenty-two, twenty-three. So that's where their proficiencies were. This, I'll just, this is my geek-out moment because I like instruction. So I'm just giving it to you anyways. This is the only time I get to do this stuff besides with our teachers. They made up midterms, but the question is, how good were? How good were they? How well was a teacher-constructed midterm that we made up before we had all the information that we have now? So what they did this summer was, we took all of the questions used on the Algebra midterms, no matter what level of course it was, and we put them all in one, made it into one test, just to look at it. And what we did was, we determined which questions did and did not align with the standards. Couple did not because they were our favorites. Get rid of them. You can ask them for something else, but not for a midterm that's preparing you to go to the standards at the end, right? So we kind of qualified what needs to be happening in the space. There's major standards, or sometimes people call them power standards. They're assessed more often than others. And we have longitudinal data going back kind of fifteen years. We know what those are. And so we look back to those to make sure that we're focusing on those and not something that they would consider ancillary. And then in math specifically, there's three types of questions. So when you made your assessment, are you hitting the standards? Are you hitting the power standards? Is there a balance of procedural, conceptual, and application problems on the test? Because that, the assessment, because that's what's going to happen to them when they see the assessment. And then the domains are the standard domains, and we're looking at those and seeing if they're coherent, and the progression of difficulty. And there's a really fun tool. The performance level descriptors. We're using this for science right now too, as well, in the elementary and middle school. This shows for a particular standard, what does a level one, two, three, four, or if it's an assessment in the upper grades with a five, five levels, what does a question that is that level look like? Because an assessment should be made up of a range of one through four or one through five, depending on what the assessment is. So we did, you know, if you have, when we first started the science, these weren't out yet. But now when we look back at those, if we have, we have too many level ones. So now we know where we need to go, now that more information is being given to us based on those standards. So this is something that they went through with each one of their questions to determine a level, and then what's the distribution of levels of question that they wanted on their midterms and their Quarter Ones and Quarter Fours. They did try to mirror what the state does. There's a little mystery behind that, though you can't, it's not as transparent as you want it to be. On content-wise, I'm going to go to science, and it'll be. Content wise, I'm going to go to science and it'll be just a brief update to keep this in your forefront of your mind. We're continuing to develop their understanding about the New York State science learning standards and the three dimension of those standards. By doing that, we're analyzing and evaluating both biology and earth and space science resources that they're using because they won't be able to use some of the same resources due to the way the standards are written. And also, New York State came out with required science investigation, science lab. So there are certain ones that you have to do for each one of these courses. So Paula Weber is my curriculum leader on this and Dave Manzella is the department head. And we looked at those last year and then they are going to work on November 5th and make sure that all the teachers understand what those are. And then they're going to do an assessment of where would those go across the year? What units would they make sense in? So they're going to look at the placement of them as well as do we have the materials and supplies to do all those labs? So just as a reminder, it's a little ways off, but I keep it, it'll be upon us before we know it. Earth and space science and life science. The teachers determined that they wanted to go at the, go until the first offering of it, which would be June 2027. So we got a couple of years yet. But you still, you're changing curriculum, it's changing resources and now labs. That takes time. And then chemistry and physics are going to go in June 2028 for theirs. They have also, they've all been working around the standards. What does it look like? They've been looking at lesson design. How is lesson design different with the three dimensional standards? So they've all been working on that. We're just starting to land some things right now. Last thing, we mentioned this last week, but just so you know, this is a K through 12 initiative. Stephanie Favini is still coaching on specially designed instruction. So she's working with integrated co-teaching teams. They look at the learners because the learners have so many individual needs. And they talk about what should instruction look like for that child because of the way that child learns. And so she works with them on a coaching cycle three times a year. And Dr. Otto will go into this more, but we've been collaborating on this initiative. And I think Mrs. Dager shared last time that there was a keen interest, K through 12, around executive functioning. And so the fully administrators, we got together, we selected a book around this and they are running book clubs with their integrated co-teaching teams, which is the classroom teacher and the special teacher together to try to think around these concepts. I could go on, but I don't know. Questions?
In your, the data for the high school English regents proficiency, it looked like the total number who took the English regents exams was like 214. Is that all four grades in the high school for English?
No, the English would be that tenth grade, it's a one particular, it's not all of them.
No, it's typically juniors.
Junior, 11th grade, sorry, 11th grade, sorry, back in Algebra. So yes. So we, it's not, like we would look at Algebra 1, 2, 3, 4, so it's not the same in English.
Gotcha.
What else?
The class participation, like how is it? I mean, I, it was part of my class when I was, for like 30 years. And so I came up and I tinkered with rubrics. How is it, how are they going to evaluate it? And is it going to be, is it going to be a significant part of the student's grade? Or is it going to be left up to the teachers to determine what they want to do with that or?
They're not really looking for an assessment protocol for participation. They're looking at changing the way they have students interact in the classroom.
Okay.
So that they are setting up structures where students are interacting more. They're not looking at it as an evaluation point right now. It's just really trying to get students to talk with each other, engage with one another. Because look, talking and writing mediate thinking, right? That's like a Vygotsky notion that goes back forever. It mediates thinking. So if they can get kids, students talking, if they can get students writing and talking, we're now mediating thinking versus what I shared with you, which is, you know, I asked Ms. Costini a question, a question. I ask a question to you all, she answers and the rest of you are not participating at that point. Now, you could argue that, you know, you're still thinking about that, but do we really know that? So they're looking at structures in the classroom that have kids get together and participate more. They're not looking for like a grading of participation. Because you're right, that could get, that could get tricky on many levels. So.
So it's more of a focus on lesson design than it is on assessment?
Yeah. So we have essential elements of instruction, right? And one of those elements is active participation, is engagement, right? And so that's what they're trying to focus in that area of our common language of instruction and design. Not so much the grading of that.
Okay.
Thanks for the question.
The civic readiness, so they can, you can get credit if you take the course. Otherwise, you just, you get the badge or the seal on your diploma or you get the seal.
There's.
Or can you get credit if you go through, is that the?
There's multiple, there's multiple, there's two strands in the way you get credit. Some of it is the regents exams that you take and the coursework that you take. There's, it's like, there's multiple ways you're earning points. Some of it is the actual participation in the course or you can get credit for participating civically, but not in the course. And that's what they're trying to get a system for now. So the students, one of the criteria is you have to civically participate somehow to get the seal. So if I don't want to do the course and engage in that, how can I get credit for civically participating?
Well, I just wanted to like be clear, like so credit towards the seal or credit as far as like the number of credits that you need to graduate?
Thank you. Credits towards the seal.
Okay.
Yeah, it's towards the seal, which includes some of the credits you need to graduate too because it will be some of your regents classes, et cetera, your assessments.
But there's that one, that class would actually go towards credits for graduation.
Yeah, it could. And then, but you could also get the seal and not take that because it's not required. It would be a way for you to civically participate out in the community. But you can choose a less, just a way that's a little less committed to doing that much work. And I don't want to say it's a lot of work, but maybe you, you're very busy and you have a lot of things going on and you want to civically participate, but you want to do it in small doses across time. So that's the second option.
Yeah, just trying to distinguish that.
Well, it's not necessarily something to get too invested in in the moment because with the work of the Blue Ribbon Commission, there's new, potentially new graduation requirements coming down the pipeline anyway, which appears to be a movement away from the traditional regents exams and, you know, advanced regents and those type of things that they've offered in the past and moving more towards a customized, you know, à la carte options for students to be able to demonstrate their readiness for graduation. So there'll be more to come on that for sure.
And that's part of the reason we go back to Local Civics, why we're looking at it, not to get deep in the weeds of it, but this part, because if they do happen to go to one diploma with multiple endorsements going on top of it, we would then be leveraged to be able to figure that out and work. But that would, we don't know that that's exactly where it's going to go. That's the proposal on the table to the board of regents in November. We don't know how that's going to be taken up or what it's going to end in. But if there's a direction that way, how do we stay prepared for that?
Mr. Pennell's comment also kind of inspired another question I had. And also made me reflect on my own teaching career here in Amherst. So but to what extent do you think the exams, the exams, like those regents exams, those kinds of state exams, not assessment? You know, that's, I know assessment is, is a key part, the L's drive, but do you think is, is the driver for instruction and curriculum? And in light of the Blue Ribbon Committee, I mean, that, that could change too. I knew as a teacher, I always struggled like, okay, how much do, does this exam? And having students prepare the kids for the exam should, should occupy the class. And sometimes it would be frustrating. I know probably math people are especially frustrated how many times the curriculum seems to change. The state like how it changes. Or for, I think for 10 years, from elementary school up through high school, kids were reading, were writing critical lens essays. And then one year, that critical lens essay magically goes away. And so all, you know, every year, kids were writing multiple critical lens essays. And there's a value to that essay, but what I mean is, when that focus and there were all kinds of things that students weren't writing, kinds of that got, and so I guess I'm, I guess I'm wondering about the balance between, certainly you can't ignore those state exams, but to what extent do they draw, that part of the assessment piece drive the curriculum and instruction?
It's one data point that tells us how our students are doing and meeting the New York State standards, which we are required to teach. It's one data point. Sometimes when we go in and you look at a question or you look at a passage and you realize maybe it's not the best way to assess that, then, you know, you take that into consideration. But having multiple data points that are aligned and assessment around the standards, we have to know how they're doing if that's, if, the standards are, it's like a race, right? So it's the finish line. The standards are where we're supposed to cross that finish line. So if we are monitoring that they're getting there, that, that's our obligation and job is to do that within balance, right? We always think of the human factor, et cetera, but I think it's a data point. But I think it's a data point we can also, should also look at. But we also consider other data points along with that. We are, we're having data conversations all year long. For example, like for writing in English in the middle school, one of the things they're going to be meeting on is their common formative writing samples. Just, we want to calibrate too, like your instruction and your interpretation of the standards and how are students doing and how are you getting them over the finish line with this? And how can you assist me with that? So it's just really good, rich conversation around instruction that will lead us to meet the standards that will hopefully graduate students that are highly competent, which we tend to do. But yeah, it's never a lightning rod, but it's there right now. We don't know where it's going to be soon. I guess there's a lot of work about that. I don't know if you want to add anything, Tony, or?
Well, I just was thinking, you know, the best teachers, which we have a lot of them in our district, are very skilled at making sure that their lessons are aligned to the standards and that the standards are aligned to the ultimate assessment at the end of the year. But they're also still focusing on fostering that love of learning and trying to inspire that excitement for the subject matter that they're teaching in the secondary level. So, you know, it's finding that balance of, you know, how do you get the kids excited and, you know, create meaning for what you're trying to teach them so they buy in and they want to participate? But yet also keeping in the back of your mind, you know, while I've created this lesson that I hope is, creates enthusiasm within the room, it's also aligned to a skill that the kids need to master that they ultimately will demonstrate on an assessment.
Right.
And that was always like my challenge that I, that I took as a social studies teacher in the middle school because, you know, when you're dealing with seventh and eighth graders, they're not always excited to learn about history and things that happened in the 18th century. So making it relevant to their current lives as well as getting them actively involved, but then also, you know, teaching them how to write a document-based essay question or something, you know, or working with primary sources to glean information that they could make inferences with. There's always that balance.
Which are always transferable skills, right?
Yeah, I think we have a lot of, a lot of teachers that strike that balance really well.
I do too.
One last question, just because I'm, I don't know things. And what do you mean by, what does that mean by when they use the executive functioning in that book? What is executive functioning?
Ability to self-regulate, maybe to stay on task and to focus, to be like, yeah. So it's more self-regulation. And I would even turn to Mike if I'm not defining exactly. It's not my expertise area. I'm a real local horned adept. Do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, it really depends if you're looking at it from a structural standpoint or a metacognitive or cognition standpoint. So it's basically take your, how your brain works. So you've got your working memory, you've got your short-term memory, you've got long-term executive functioning. It's just a fancy term that sort of encompasses all of it and how they interplay and work with each other. It's a fancy term.
Self-regulation, being able to stay on task. Where does the intervention need to be? If it's, our task issue is interfering with learning, that type of, that's what they're interested in. So I did okay. Self-regulation, that question. Any other?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the last item in the superintendent's report is, are you going to play that?
I'm just going to, he's queuing.
Well, hang just, hang tight there. We're going to run the show.
He's got time.
It is, you know, this is Board Recognition Week according to the New York State School Boards Association. So it's an opportunity where at least publicly or in front of our staff and the camera, I get to recognize all of you or, and express my appreciation for the hard work you put in to serving on the school board. I think it's, I wouldn't call it a thankless job because I think there is a lot of value in the job, but it's a volunteer position and it's a very time-consuming position. Most people don't know that these meetings run very smoothly and they take us about, you know, 45 to 60 minutes to conduct. But there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes in order for these meetings to run successfully. And much of that work is you going through tons of information that's provided to you, not only within our board agenda and the backup that goes along with it, but also within other reports that you're provided. So tonight is a night for me to express my appreciation for your service on the school board on behalf of the community. And also, I do want to point out that the lady behind the camera had a great idea to come up with a video that she created for School Board Recognition Week that we would like to play for you. And then we have some other things too to show our appreciation for you.
At School Board Recognition Week. This is a time to promote awareness and understanding of the important work performed by local school boards. Public schools through the network of our communities. And it's our local school boards who is ultimately responsible for student success.
Here in Amherst, we're grateful to our seven school board members for their service to our community and to our schools.
Our school board members give the citizens of Amherst a voice in our education.
Board service is a volunteer effort and responsibility that takes time and careful decision-making.
The constitutions of our school board are often overlooked, but cannot be overstated.
They are helping shape tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Dominic Bealow.
Thank you, Mrs. Mary Dean-Mitson.
Thank you, Mrs. Laura Delcock.
Thank you, Mrs. Lynn Arrington.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon Crack.
Thank you, Vice President, Ms. Jessica McLaughlin.
Thank you, Board President, Mr. Paul Steinle.
Thanks to your commitment, dedication, and passion for our district, we're able to meet our mission to prepare all students.
To excel in the American world through the development of their abilities.
To reason, solve problems, apply knowledge, to communicate and collaborate effectively.
So we also have, so great job. We also have social media posts. Tomorrow, there'll be an editorial in the Amherst P. We have a news feature on our website. We have messages on, nope. We also have messages on our, you went too far. This is what happens. We also have messages on our Main Street sign for our high school. And we're really excited about this because it's an idea that I had several years ago. And I pitched it to our very talented technology teacher at the high school, Mr. Bruce Curtis, who you've seen here. For those of you that have been on the board, he's done presentations where he goes into great detail as to how the kids design and create things in his class. When we renovated the high school, we outfitted his area down there on the Berriman side of the basement with really state-of-the-art technology, one of them being a CNC machine for woodworking. So we pitched this idea to Bruce and he's very busy. And what we're about to show you is something that takes significant amount of time and great detail. We only have one, or we have four available at this moment that are done. And obviously, we need seven. So I was going to do our own version of the Board Hunger Games to see who gets them tonight, which Deb told me I can't. So unfortunately, I'm going to show you one, knowing that in a few weeks, we'll have all seven of them for you to be able to take them home. But it is a charcuterie board.
Oh my goodness.
For those of you that, you know, like to entertain or like to maybe even decorate your kitchen.
Oh my gosh.
And the, the beauty of this is it's all, nope. And the, the beauty of this is it's all, it's all made from different inlaid woods. So like there's dark walnut, there's cherry, there's pine. And so these were all cut out and then a new piece put in in order for this logo to come together.
So is that individual student project or is that a class project?
This is.
Or is it Mr. Curtis?
Mr. Curtis project.
Am I allowed to touch it?
Yeah, we'll let you pass it around.
Are you gonna get one too, Tony? That's pretty cool.
Well, we have seven of them coming, I think, so I don't have one. But it was designed for you to not cut on. So Bruce is gonna give us some directions about, you know, how to maintain them over time and make sure they keep their beauty.
You can cut on the back of it.
Yeah. You're right. You can cut on the back of it, but the front, and it's not like dishwasher safe or anything like that, but.
Like oil it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm, I'm ready for it.
My desk is beautiful, behind the glass.
Well, so the way, and we've had a lot of conversations about this, even down to the shape and the slight, you know, curve on the edges.
That's really cool.
The idea was that it would be something you could use, you know, when entertaining, if you're putting out meats and cheeses and fruit and stuff. Or you could also display it, you know, and it would be a nice piece to have in your kitchen on display as well.
That's so thoughtful.
It's unbelievable.
Thank you.
Yeah. And there was, there was one version he showed us that was infill, similar to that process, but it was done with epoxy. And when I looked at it, it almost looked like a piece of wood with a sticker on it. And I said, without the description of the work, this doesn't do it justice. So then he went back and came back and said, I think I can do the logo with different types of woods. But some of the fonts and the designs have been very difficult. So this is, he's very proud of how this turned out and I'm very upset.
There's a lot of detail on that.
Lots, lots of detail. Because even, you know, the words tradition, pride, like, they came out great.
That's beautiful.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
So there'll be one for each of you. We do have four on hand, but.
Are we compensating Mr. Curtis for all this extra work?
Um, no. He's been, he's been provided with some resources and time to be able to get it done. But of course, you know, Mr. Curtis goes above and beyond. So obviously, not all of the time has been on the clock, so to speak. But he was very excited about it. And I, and I think I asked him a few years ago and he was committed to it. And then he came back to me and said, I don't think I'm gonna be able to get them done. And then I said, okay, do it for next year. You know, and then next year came and he said, I can't do it. And then I went to him again last spring. And he was like, I am getting this done before I retire. And I said, great, let's do it for the fall. And he committed to it and so here we are. It's nice, it's been a few years in the making. It's nice to see it come to fruition.
That's a G map. See what she's missing?
Uh-oh.
I'll have her over for charcuterie.
Have her over. So that will be coming your way. We hope to add them to you, you know, by Thanksgiving. So you've got that nice charcuterie when you're, when you're hosting your Thanksgiving gatherings. But thank you and you have stuff to look forward to throughout the week and beyond.
That's incredible and thank you.
That's all we have for the superintendent's report.
Okay, great. Then I will need a motion to approve item D.
I'll make a motion to approve item D.
I know.
Which includes items E, F, and G, your business personnel and financial items.
Thanks, can I have a second?
A second.
Great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Any follow-up, Ms. Custody?
I do not have any.
Okay.
Then.
Charcuterie boards are not on the follow-up.
Then we will need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll sit down.
Oh, okay. Two seconds. Bealow.
Go ahead.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes six zero to adjourn. Thank you.